Okay, I am going to go out to the share screen first of all, and I will show you the handout that will be available right afterwards. I will get it sent to you. I apologize, but this morning life was a little abrupt for me and I was still finishing it. It's about four and a half pages. It'll say five, but just run off the first four and you should be fine if you care to run it off. And it's pretty much an outline view of what we're doing today. And so I'll just page down a little bit. At least I was going to try to page down a little bit. I don't want to do that. Where am I here? Page down. It's not going to let me. Okay. Anyway, 15 genealogy gems, but it's really 15 plus. There's lots of things in these county commission minutes and records. Most states are pretty much alike in terms of the things that they do because they have the general the general duty to conduct county business. It will vary from, of course, the metro scene kind of county thing all the way down to quite rural, and I'll show you some of these today. I'm primarily, I'll concentrate primarily on the past because these records have to be kept, folks, so they will be there for you. If you have to go to the county office and get them, that's one thing. But generally, before 1950 or even into the 60s, you will find them in the local public newspaper that has the contract with the county commissioners for the year. You'll be able to tell that because in the ad section of that particular newspaper, you're going to see that there's all kinds of county ads, et cetera. So you'll, you will be able to pick up on it quickly and carefully. So let's see where we are. And I'm going to stop screen share on this one so that I can go over to the actual presentation. Let's see, here I am. And you're seeing my last screen, darn it, but that's okay. We'll start up here and go to the slideshow from the beginning. And hopefully that is there for you in full view. So 15 plus genealogy gems you can find in county commission minutes and records. Because remember, they are the administrative force for the entire county. There will be other county officers, but those county officers have a duty to make those reports and also to at least file a report if they don't do a public report. Talking about it, but they at least must file a report and the file filed report must be approved. So they're like a monthly and quarterly city directory because they're so full of precise department descriptors of things that that those departments need to do. And wow, voila, they are super full of names of citizens. And this will be every kind of citizen you can think of. You know, those people that kind of drop off and you don't see any stories about them and they're not in the community news or anything like that. You're, you're likely going to find them here. And they are gold for genealogists. If you've not been using them as a fast way to begin to get to county records that would be of importance to you, then this is, this is your sign, folks. So what do they do? They conduct county business and all those other county businesses make reports to them. So you can see the meetings and the agendas, and even if it just says that the treasurer filed the report, aha, today that treasurer's report is likely to be out there online for you to see. And in yesteryear, it would be filed and you could see most of it verbatim. So goldmine again of names, details, and you have to read between the lines sometimes to figure out what was going on. But they're one of the best ways I know of to find what I call the hidden inquest. You know, the one that was not saved, was not written up, but it occurred. The names of the people who participated in that inquest, not well, not the dead person necessarily, but everybody else, the jurors, the witnesses, et cetera, will be there. And it's a sign that that occurred. So if you want to be a county commissioner today, there's only a couple of requirements. You have to have resided in the county and commissioner district for at least two years preceding the general election that you filed for. You must be a registered voter and you have to be at least 18. And there's some other requirements that I'm not going to get into regarding your ineligible ability. If you've improperly held public money, if you've had a felony conviction that has not been removed, if you have a mental incapacity and so on. But suffice to say that when you get my handout for this at this site that I've put up here that is available out on the web, you're going to be able to go to this and see any of these other things. And I do recommend right now that if you're in California or you're in Washington and you're trying to figure out these county commission records, or you're like me, still trying to figure out some of the things from Pennsylvania, that you look at what they have had to keep in the past, go out to their retention schedule that will be out there for every state. And you can also look at it historically in some of the states, or you're going to have to follow the law backward to figure out what they had to retain in the past. Ours, of course, there's a Montana codes annotated 2021 title one, general laws and definitions and the commission on uniform state laws. And they tell in general what the duties of commissioners are. And that for one thing, in an attempt to get them to be a little more uniform in the rules that they make for their counties, that they make at least an attempt to attend the meeting of the national conference of commissioners on uniform state laws. And by the way, they've made it easy for them because it's out online. So that they continue to get the training they have because believe it or not, some county commissioners sometimes get on a county commission because they have one thing they're trying to get done. And they kind of ignore some of their other responsibilities. And so other commissioners there, it makes it kind of tough on them. When the first thing is a new commissioner saying, why can't I do that particular thing? And you know, they haven't gone to the training yet. So they have a big general authority. They're juris, they have jurisdiction and power. And there's, there's a few limitations and a few restrictions by law, but they have that jurisdiction and power to represent the county, have the care of the county property, management of all the concerns in all cases where no one else has that power by law. They perform all other acts and things required by law, not enumerated in this title, and you're going to see a few fun ones today. This county commission minutes and records, the agendas are just as important as the minutes because you want to look at those agendas and see if they omitted something that they later worked on, that they had to add back into an agenda or whatever. So you want to look at agendas pretty carefully if they are available. Many times as genealogists and historians, we only look at the actual minute records. We don't realize unless they've told us in a discussion that this was added in. They're available from the first meeting after a county has been created. And no, they're not always every month. In yesteryear, they were about a little more than quarterly. But they ended up at that point having lots of emergency meetings to take care of details that had come up. Those minutes and records and the agendas are available immediately. And they're available also in the county official newspaper of record. This is why you want to be able to find that county official newspaper of record if your commission says, we don't know what happened to those records. They are supposed to know what happened to those records and only in the case of a burned county might, they might not be available because they are something which must be saved. Today, they're usually available online at a county website, except for Valley County. And some meetings are live via Zoom or WebEx or whatever. That's what's happened since COVID and that's a good thing. You need to, you know, these things, these minutes records record all the items on the commission's agenda and they also include the things that they added in. So be very, very careful when you're looking at that again. I found some additions that were improper. In other words, they had not noticed them properly before they went to the commission meeting and the commission later had to go back and do that particular thing again. You're going to see payments, you're going to see actions, you're going to see orders. In the early days of Lewis and Clark County in Montana and in the early days of Cascade County, Montana, for example, before there were incorporated cities, the county got all of that great revenue from saloons. And so you saw them faithfully licensing those saloons by law for either six months at a time or a year at a time. And you'll find every one of those lists and you'll find all of the all the problems that occurred when a saloon did more than it was supposed to, so to say. And there are some lively discussions in the commission's reports. Remember, these minutes are public records. They must be available to the public. What I've seen today is I've looked at some of the new ones is they're perhaps not as nuanced as they used to be. They provide a summary. But many of these places, most places in Montana, except for Valley County, are recording these also and making them available. In fact, for one or two of our counties, they don't have the minutes written in place, but they have the total recording of the meeting in place. So that's a good thing. Let's talk about the type of, just some of the types of county offices that give reports to the county commissioners that you've got opportunities to get into. The clerk and recorder reports on, for example, any kind of vital records. And in our county school elections, various kinds of elections and so on, the clerk and recorder's duties can be a little different from place to place. The clerk of court records. This morning in the Great Falls newspaper, the clerk of court was lamenting the fact that there were 21 pages, count them, 21 pages of people who had been asked into jury duty, who had not yet replied. And they only had until October 12th to do that. And the list is out at the sheriff's office and you can get the list. Wow. That would be a neat thing if I were in 2016 and I were looking for that 2023 jury list. The disaster and emergency services, if you have a county airport and some of them do. District court, a summary thing at least every once in a while, every six months, youth court. GIS planners and county planners, search and rescue, county transit services. And that's where Valley County, by the way, has a fantastic transit service system and they really take care of their people. The sanitary and county health services and county health services, you're only going to get a summary report because most of it is private. The sheriff's department has various kinds of things, inquests and coroner reports and day to day activities and who's in the jail and so on. Land fill and refuse disposal, various kinds of advisory boards. And when county commissioners appoint these advisory boards, they tell them what power they have. And sometimes it's pretty considerable. We'll see that in World War II. So I thought I'd show just one county to you. Revalley County Commissioners pretty much spread, pretty much put at their site out everything that they are working on executive as it, as an executive and administrative department. So they supervise the official contact of all county officers. Now, can they get rid of that county officer? No, not if it's an elected officer. That requires some other things. And by the way, in our county this morning, the school district here, school district one has expressed a no confidence letter regarding the clerk and recorder's office and asked that their voting be taken back by the county commissioners. We'll see what happens with that. They, county commissioners collect, safe keep, manage dispersment of all county revenues. They organize special districts like fire districts and sewer districts and water and cemetery districts. Cemetery being some of the first ones that they ever did. They've always, right from the get go, right from the days of any kind of territorial government in every state supervised road programs. They have the power to consolidate county offices and contract with other government units. They can appoint department heads. They can do all kinds of things. They have fiscal responsibilities. They have licensing and regulations. They can license a public dance. They can license ferries and we'll talk about that a little later on. They can still license public scales as a matter of fact. They can establish and regulate parking and curfews where something is unincorporated, like a town like Big Fork, Montana, which is unincorporated and it relies strictly on its deputies. They, they regulate land use zoning, all kinds of things. But here's what you're going to find. I couldn't even begin to put all these down, but I figured 15 might intrigue you. The sheriff, the county attorney, the treasurer, the auditor, they all have that plus their pay each month. Recipients of poor funds in yesteryear, recipients of old age pensions, which were different from the poor funds. Dependent mothers who got money because they'd been abandoned. Poor farm inhabitants also different again from those poor funds and those old age pensions. Counties had lots to do. To, in order to manage the road work, they went out to look at those roads. We'll see that in a little while. And they had road supervisors and they repaid road tax monies based on the proven age of the person. You see, if you were over the age of 64 in 1938, then you didn't have to pay and your poll tax on road taxes anymore. Because most people felt that you'd given your time or you'd worked on those roads. Corner journeys in inquests, which have the names of all those people and who got what in payment. Sale of land for unpaid taxes, the organization of special districts. Those who were appointed to do a particular thing and the precise responsibilities they had as an appointee. Delinquent taxes are going to have each person or business named and the property described. That's a super gem. Townsite authorizations, official surveys, bonds, curfews, zoning as a means to regulate. They rationed tires and authorized blackouts in World War II. They always, always, always have as number, as one of their number one things to investigate citizen claims against the county and authorize payments where needed. And to deny requests that were not authorized, such as, for example, sheriff that hired one or two or three too many deputies at a time and did not have the authority to do that. And they, these will be shown as not being authorized right in those minutes. I've put one up here for you on the powers and responsibilities of Valley County. It's a little different again because they have to manage their airport. They have some very different things again in terms of their correctional facilities, their museum, their senior citizen programs. So these are slightly different and you're going to have to go to each county to find out what they felt was most important and which has not been taken away from them by another law. So poor fund recipients. If you're looking for your poor people or looking to who to figure out who took care of the poor people in a community. This one is big, right from territorial times, or I'll tell you, in the east, right back in colonial times, there was a way for people to take care of poor fund recipients. They might be taken into a home in colonial times. There might be so much money given to a person who had been approved to take care of other people. And you'll see those listed. So here you'll see in Flathead County, this one is a list of 72 names for poor fund in 19, it's either 1932 or 1938. And you'll see two people there who asked for money to take care of something they needed help with. And you'll also see a hard hardware company that had, had outlay based on working with a home that had a problem and the person owning it needed help. You'll also see that in this 1938 Flathead Monitor, that was the name of the newspaper then. In the commission minutes that the commissioners provided assistance where need, where it was needed to help a citizen. It was the depression or the end of it after all. So they directed the clerk to issue a petty cash order in the sum of $20 to George M. By so he could get to Fergus Falls, Minnesota. He was a transient poor person. And then they showed you other poor orders in addition to things that I've already talked about where people just needed groceries and they got this much money for groceries for the month. Lots of these. You'll see another one in terms of taking care of a person. Robert F. Robertson, who was badly injured about a year ago by falling from a bridge on the line of the Montana Central Railroad near Monarch. And while in the employee of the company appeared before the board of county commissioners asking for transportation to Duluth. He has been a patient at Columbus Hospital for many months. He's steadily failing. The board will request the Great Northern Railroad to furnish the transportation to him. So they were directing and they pretty much got their way with that. This was in the Great Falls Tribune in 1904. So you can begin to see what these look like. I've tried to look at these at least from like the 1890s forward, where I'm sure that they do get into a newspaper. So you're going to have fun being able to look at the newspapers that are available today to see these reports. In terms of roads and bridges, the minute that a county got established, people were into the office saying, I know that we each as citizens, as male citizens eligible to vote beginning age 21, we have to put in $2 a year on roads or we have to work for that amount for a road supervisor. So we need a road out at Giant Springs or we need a road out at Nyhart or DePuyere or whatever. You can see that in this particular report in 1938, the, the commission audited and approved 15 names and businesses with regard to the road fund in terms of work done or whatever. And this was different from the first days when we got that road money of $2 a year. People were getting paid substantially more after 1926. I'm going to remind you again that there was a highway commission in 1926. Every state had these. California's was, was established well before that, as was Washington's. But the county still had charge of local roads as they do today. You'll notice that they also looked at the application of Albert Knutson for a refund of his road tax. He was paying a certain amount, but he was over the statutory age of 64. And so he said, hey, give me back my money for the year. You charged me again and you shouldn't have. And that went through. He was given back his money and it was noted so that he would not be in the report again the next year. The bridge fund, there were nine names regarding bridge fund things that that had to happen. I can tell you that in 1938, out in my little community in Ferndale, which was in Flathead County, one of the piers failed in the Swan River underneath one of, on the upper Ferndale Bridge. And they had to do some rock work there. County commissioners in the past and today take road inspection trips. And what's fascinating to me here, I mean, I already knew the name of the county commissioners, but they have an actual schedule. They need to follow their schedule and prove that they follow their schedule. And that will tell you what really got worked on. Now, if you're a family that had a road supervisor or somebody who was working on roads, this will tell you when the road was examined and either approved or they said, no, this isn't satisfactory. They bring that report back on those inspection trips and they do make a report, not just this one. It will, in the minutes, it will tell you a little more about each one of these. In that same time, they discussed the Holt Ferry report, Holt, Montana, over at the end of Flathead Lake, just at the beginning of, or at the out, outflow for the Flathead River into Flathead Lake. They reported on the number of people who've gone across the ferry, any kinds of problems with the ferry, et cetera. It was ordered filed for that month. And even if they didn't meet every month, the Holt Ferry report is available for every month. You'll notice that Sheriff's Civil Report was approved and ordered filed and it would be a report where they talked about the various kinds of difficulties that had happened and the various kinds of responses that they'd had to make in communities. And here's an application of Albert Knutson for that road fund tax again for a refund. So they take care of all kinds of things. It's, it's a big order of business. In yesteryear, one of the things that I found fascinating in 1903, and this is also true in Lewis and Clark County, in Deer Lodge County, virtually every county in Montana. And Washington had these bounty inspectors. I don't know if California did. But a bounty inspector district is a special district created by the county commission, given specific responsibilities and boundaries to what they are able to do. But the county commission can't do, can't do everything in 1903. So they appointed C.M. Goodell, Oscar Stephens and Anna McFernley as members of a Fergus County Bounty Commission. And then those guys went out and appointed eight bounty inspectors specific to certain areas of Lewis and of Fergus County, which was huge. There was a guy from, by of the, by the name of Peck from Garnell, Campbell of Utica, Mitchell of Stanford, two guys, Cook and Stone at Loistown and Ashbridge at Highfield, and I don't know where Highfield is. And McMahon at Edgewater and Smith at Roy. So they were covering those bounty inspectors because if somebody came in with a hide from a wolf or from a coyote or a critter, whatever, that was specified that they could get money for, somebody had to inspect it to make sure that it, it was legitimate and that the person could be paid. You will find lists of the bounty hunters, and these are not people bounty hunters as we would see TV shows on today. They were bounty hunters for wolves, coyotes, et cetera. They make reports from the treasurer's office, from the school superintendent office, the fall and spring reports, including the census of students until 1960, until 2006 in Montana. Each county was responsible to take that and that is a treasure trove. And every year census of all the students available in the county and their parents and their addresses. And those students were between the ages of zero and 21. And they are all there. In fact, many counties have put their information out online. Ours is available out online, I know. So that you can look at that and they are a wonderful way to find the little people, especially when you don't find them in a city directory or you don't find them in any kind of gossip column or anything else. It's at least evidence of where they were. The county attorney is going to do an overview of caseloads, general description of citizen requests, various things that are happening, and he is going to alert the county to problems like methamphetamine problems or something like that. I'm just going to go through the sheriff's department really quickly as one that has great depth. The sheriff's department budget is worth going over as you listen when the budget is approved and again throughout the year. When sheriff's departments, especially in yesteryear, were famous for doing more hiring, they'd just get frustrated. Hire someone else and say, well, deal with it. I hired the person and the county commissioners would say, nope, not authorized. It's going to have to come out of your own pocket or whatever. Those civil reports, those coroner register reports and inquests and even right down to and including the neat hint that you'll find on a person's death certificate if the coroner signs the record. You know that it was coroner investigated. Requests for payments of jurors, witnesses, the jail report. Oh, and then those sheriff's sales of yesteryear. And sometimes sheriffs still have the responsibility And sometimes sheriffs still have the responsibility today, but it may be someone else in the county, right from the commission office, where they sell land, which the the payments, the tax payments, et cetera, have not been paid on, and it's time to resell the land. I'm showing you here a delinquent tax list from nineteen five in our Tribune. That's a very similar one for Lewis and Clark County and for Granite County and for Yellowstone County, any place. This appears usually the first week. People are warned. The previous year, if you notice, this one says December thirtieth nineteen five. It took up several pages. It included personal taxes, not just the land and property taxes. You have to go all the way to the end. And when you go to the end, you'll get an alphabetical list of people who could not pay their personal taxes in the county. It's very illuminating for for me, anyway, to be able to find those people. And guess what? It all depends. People have said, well, I should catch those, shouldn't I, if I'm out at newspapers dot com? Or if I'm out at genealogybank dot com, which is another newspaper site, I should catch those because it should be scooping up that name because it's, you know, you've you've got the ability to do that. No. Some of these newspapers have poor print, and you are not necessarily going to have every name picked picked up, so it is worth looking at. It is especially worth looking at these delinquent tax lists. If you ever find your person on it once, you're going to want to check it again for at least the next eight or ten years, if you can do that. If you look at the squabbles from the Commissioner's Office in December of each year, it gives a real scolding to the people who have deliberately not paid their taxes till the end of the year, even though they were due considerably before that. And the county treasurer says, hey, I know who you are. I know what you're doing, and this is not good for all the other citizens who pay on time. Well, of course, they seized lands for unpaid taxes and they offered those for sale. This is from the Flathead Courier in Poulsen, April twenty-two nineteen twenty-six, on page A six, under the legal publications. It says, notice is hereby given that the undersigned will, on the eighteenth day of May nineteen twenty-six, apply to the county treasurer of Lake County for a tax deed to the following described property. It describes the property. And it says, you know, you're going to see that the amount owed is a hundred and forty-two dollars down in that Ronan Townsite, and that the Board of County Commissioners is going to take possession of that for no payment, and it will happen on May eighteen. Now, they've given them two, three months to be able to take care of this. This was originally dated March thirty-first, and it's already gone into April several times. So these appeared several months and several weeks, in fact, if it was a weekly newspaper. You're going to see things like, I was intrigued by this one, the Dearborn Project down in Lewis and Clark County in nineteen twelve. They were selling the water rights, the real estate, a twenty-two mile canal, and other property, all under the old Dearborn-Carry project, and they sold it at sheriff's sale to the Ames Realty Company for thirty thousand dollars. And because they had gotten a judgment by default in the sum of sixty-six thousand against the Great Falls Land and Irrigation Company and a couple of people. So you'll see some real weird twists. This land, by the way, was probably in an area where there were desert land claims, and it, the canal just didn't get finished. When they build bridges, and they still do today, and they build county roads. This is a neat ad for the bridge over the Marius River in nineteen four. This, the Shoto County Commissioners met at Fort Benton. They led a contract to build a bridge over the Marius River. There were thirteen bids submitted, some of them from as far away as St. Louis. I was really intrigued. Yes, somebody from the state of Montana got that bid. But you will see names, you will see people, you will see what is going on. Pepperd of Missoula got this. A real gem for you is Missoula County. They have their county commission journals available online from eighteen sixty-five forward. This is a real gem. And I only put part of it in here because it just runs on and everything is there through two thousand and twenty-one, and then twenty-two and twenty-three are immediately available on their website. This is ideal to see some of these things and see what's there. So you've got a nice opportunity to see those journals in addition to the Daily Missoulian, and which had the contract, the official contract. So you've got two places to go here. My bet would be on this site because it has good stuff. Valley County Transit, you know, when you look at it and you say little, well, huge Valley County, but a long distance around everything. They offer regular service Monday to Friday, and then they have some emergency services on weekends for people. But they have hydraulic wheelchair lifts to help people. Capable drivers, economical prices, people are going to pay anywhere from one to three dollars for a ride. And that's today. So that's some of what a county does to subsidize its citizens in a very appropriate way. I know that California has many of the same things. I am not sure about Washington. I know that they did. I don't know if they're still subsidizing that. You'll see that there might be hearings on incorporation, disincorporation, on new tracts of lands that are opened up within cities. That all goes through county commissioners and through their land office. This is in Shelby in nineteen thirty-one. Somebody went to the Tool County Commissioners and said, you know, we were going to have this town of Sweetgrass, but it's not happening. Nothing is there, and we need to disincorporate. And they've had, they have a hearing on December twenty-three of that year in front of a judge if this doesn't get done. And so the county commission acted to disincorporate Sweetgrass at that point. During World War Two, the commissioners grappled with tire rationing immediately. This was January one of nineteen forty-two, and remember what happened on December, December seven of nineteen forty-one. So less than a month later, the United States government had already made county boards responsible for putting together rationing boards of various types. And the first big one was rationing tires. And what it it came out to be is that nobody could have, nobody would be able to get a new tire. They were all being co-opted for the government and for the various businesses which were involved in building things that we needed because we were at war. They also appointed a board to deal with blackout regulations, blacking out all lighting in towns at certain times, and to even have practice blackouts. And if people did not pay attention, if somebody's house still was lit up, they had a means to be able to get to those people with security officers and get the lights off. So, you know, these boards have a lot of responsibility and a lot of things that they can do. And they made these things work. When you find those rationing cards that your grandparents or your great-grandparents got for World War Two, take a look to see who issued those, and you'll see it's the county or the county, the city in cooperation with the county or whatever. They called for trial blackouts. And the authority had to be settled by a Defense Commission from the United States. And the county commissioners had been informed that they had the power to supervise their civilian authorities to do these blackouts. And this was a very serious thing when we didn't know if Japan was going to come at us further than where they did in Hawaii. And in fact, the West Coast at times, and a couple of places on the East Coast, they were blanketed with various kinds of things. You're going to see that, just like in other counties, Ravalley County, old age pension recipients were listed in the minutes. I sure hope Ravalley County still has its old age pensions because they are gold for you. In Great Falls, our Great Falls Genealogy Society has possession of the old age pension documents, including the questionnaires filled out by people who wanted old age pensions. So these are are several pages long before they could be approved by the county. And they also may include letters from other people in their families saying, we cannot take care of this person. This person still has the the ability to be in his or her home, but needs a little bit of help. So you can see that people are listed each and every month that they're here. And by the way, this was a voluntary kind of action that counties could set up. Montana and many other counties, especially in the West, made provision for this. This was enacted during the Depression, and it was a great help for people. So you're going to see these old age pensions here, and they will be as requested. They will be the amounts requested or the amounts that were investigated and approved to be there. We have our pensions. If you're curious about these, you might go ask in your county courthouse if they still have the old age pensions. I will tell you that this is something that they didn't necessarily have to retain, but you can hope. We found ours buried in the basement of the Cascade County courthouse, and we were able to take possession of them in two thousand and four. And they are a great resource when you're looking at a person who had their own place or had the ability to rent their own place. They they didn't need to go to the poorhouse. They didn't need to go to the poor farm. They didn't need other kinds of assistance. They just needed a little help each month. They will be reported each month until they die or until Social Security takes effect and the county takes down or takes back its own rules on old age pensions. Here's Granite County Memorial Hospital in in Peabody, in Phillipsburg, Montana, in nineteen fifty. They were attempting to build a hospital there and found that every bid, including everything they had for plumbers, et cetera, everything came in way too high, so they had to go back to the drawing boards. I found this interesting in Great Falls Tribune in nineteen forty because the county abandoned the Giant Springs Road, which we know is no longer abandoned today. It's quite a popular road for people, and that's quite a popular state park. But we didn't get the road back until we got the state park there. But they abandoned this road in nineteen forty because the road served no purpose at that time. It's ironic, really, because this was at least a part of the road which used to go to the first silver smelter that we had in Great Falls before nineteen hundred, and that's where it was located. An interesting item, so they could abandon roads. I found counties directing road supervisors with a letter to go to a person's house in the nineteen nineteen teens and inform them that they had no right to put barbed wire across the county road, even if they felt that they owned it, or that they'd had things before, or that they didn't want to allow people on that road. And it was so ordered, and if it did not happen, then they went to court and they were fined mightily. And it still came out that the road was a county road. And you won't find just one instance of this. This was a pretty familiar thing with regard to land rights and what people thought about land. So if you find one of those for your family, you want to get, if it goes, you want to get the court case. There will be legal advertising. This one is for a twenty-ton trailer, pneumatic tires, four axles, as per specifications in the office of the county surveyor for a particular thing. And this was a big deal by nineteen forty because people were still saying from about nineteen twenty-five through nineteen forty, when this issue was finally settled, in Montana, they were still saying, we don't believe that county commissioners have the right to authorize buying or purchasing any kind of vehicle for a department. It was a big deal until they said, look, we have to do it for our business. Well, I can tell you in Minnesota, or in New York, or in South Carolina, in Arizona, county commissioners are just like ours. In Minnesota, their rule is a little more streamlined. It says county commissioners are the elected officials who oversee county activities. They work to ensure that citizens' concerns are met. Federal and state requirements are fulfilled and county operations run smoothly. But I guarantee you, if you go look down at some of those counties in Minnesota, they'll have a list, just like other counties in Montana have their particular list of things that they need to do. I mean, Valley County knows that one of its most important things is its airport. And so it does have charge of it, and it's very careful of what it does. There's way more than fifteen things. I can tell you that when they organize, as they do, a new board, and usually these people are elected for six years with one person going off every two years within that that six-year period of time. So that there's lots of overlap. In Montana, as in Minnesota, or in Colorado, or California, they organize by electing a chairman, and they at once proceed with the transaction of routine business. And that routine business takes a lot of time. Yes, they do get paid, very, very different pay from state to state. But today, they spend a lot of time on that business. So you'll see things that really vary in Montana, and I looked at Nevada, and they also varied there. They don't have nearly as many counties. But most everybody is holding at least some kind of meeting by Zoom, except for Valley. They haven't done it yet that I could find. It's at least not visible at their site. If you go out and look at these county commissioners, they're going to tell you where their meetings are, what they're using. This is a go-to meeting type of thing. They're going to tell you if they're using WebEx or Zoom or whatever, and how to join the particular meeting. And for some, once they've held the meeting, you will see that those counties also keep that meeting up there so people can watch it from beginning to end because maybe they haven't transcribed all the minutes yet or whatever, or maybe they figure that there is an important discussion with those particular meetings. So they're expending time and bandwidth to make sure that their citizens have this. I foresee that within the next couple of years, pretty well, everyone in Montana will have this. It's just a matter of having budgeted for it and and being able to do it. They seem eager to do it. And for those of us who are looking in the past to see those records, remember the local newspaper, remember to figure out which newspaper was the official newspaper, and that changed from year to year, or at the most, they might make a contract for two years if there were several newspapers in the area. And it can change abruptly if they decide that another newspaper is going to get the business. And you had to apply for the business. You had to submit a bid. Then it would abruptly change. You'll have to go find that other newspaper. One of my favorites, in addition to Missoula County that I found in Montana, is Dawson County, way over in the east of Montana, but they have a beautiful commissioner archives. They have road petitions. They have various kinds of minutes, and it looks like they're planning to put even more things up. This one and Missoula are really others should be following them. I can tell you that Flathead County is also very, very good with putting things up. They might not have an official archive, but I can tell you they've taken care to make sure that their materials are archived. Shoto County, Cascade County, Flathead County, for example, you can go out to familiesearch.org and go look at within the Wiki, pull down to the Wiki, go to Cascade County, and you'll see what they have, and you'll find that they that they have entered into contracts with these counties, and many of their things are archived. We have about nine different kinds of records archived out at Family Search, which serves a very, very neat purpose. Flathead County has lots of records out there, and so do others. So happy hunting with these things because you've not only got newspapers, but you've always got Family Search, or you've got So happy hunting with these things because you've not only got newspapers, but you've always got Family Search, or you've got the particular county itself, if it has a commissioner archives. I vote for the commissioner archives if we can get them because hopefully then they make everything available to their citizens from territorial, territorial times forward. So I'm going to stop now, and I'm going to stop the share and move over if I can, if this thing is letting me stop.